March 7th, City Council Study Session to Order. Joanna and Tom, please. Mayor Downing is absent. Mayor Portem Dodge here. Councilmember Snutzinger here. Councilmember Malatka.
Here.
Councilmember Sowers will be absent. Councilmember Joe Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Okay, thank you, everybody. First item on the agenda, we're actually going to do a switch because Kathy Immel's co-presenter is running behind in traffic, so we're going to start with "Be Our Energy Future" with Preston Gibson.
Good evening. Thank you for the time to be here this night, for the time you're going to, and attention going to get to this presentation. I'm a preliminary manager with Xcel Energy. I don't think I know all of you. My name's Preston Gibson. I work in a five-county region, Adams County, Bloomfield, Gilpin, Clear Creek, and Jefferson, and do everything from public outreach like this to problem-solving. I work a lot with your team, your Public Works team, sometimes with your Economic Development team, planners, and so on. But at any rate, tonight, I've got a really, I think, a really exciting program and presentation on our energy future. As a company, we have been very successful with renewable energy, just as an example. And we like to brag about this, we're number one in wind energy, have been for 11 years in a row in terms of the amount of wind we have on our system nationally. We've also been number one, or not number one, but certainly the top five to 10 in terms of the solar energy that we have in our system. We're very supportive of demand-side management, which is energy efficiency. And essentially, we, sometimes we ask the question, now, what's next? So we've been pretty good, pretty efficient, a lot of renewables, and while at the same time keeping our rates, I think, very competitive. So as we look as to what is next, I think we're talking about things like microgrids, smart meters, battery storage technology for solar energy, excuse me. And we're also looking at getting into purchasing some gas reserves, so prices are low, it makes sense to get into the gas business as a joint venture with other companies that have been doing this as a business. Currently, we've already got 22% of our energy being generated by renewable energy, the majority of which is being generated by wind. And we've already reduced our carbon emissions by about 25% over 2005, so we're clearly moving in the right direction there, and it'll be over 35%, we believe, in the next four years, when we'll clearly meet and probably exceed the 30% renewable energy standard. So at any rate, we're looking at, you know, what's next? We have an enormous amount of wind on our system, as I said, and we've added almost 1,000 megawatts in the last, just in the last, just in the last two years. So as we look at where we go from here, we like to look towards customer empowerment, options for customers, different options that aren't even available today. We look at things like a cellphone plan, where you have a lot of different options with your cellphone plan. We want it to be the same way with energy, only you don't have to pay to change your plan. You actually can choose different options when you want to do that. I'll go over those options in just a second, but we also need a modern and efficient and interactive grid system. It used to be that energy was only delivered one way, we generated it and delivered it to you, and now we're in a situation where you actually, in some cases, generate it and deliver it to us, especially if you have solar panels on your rooftop, just as one example. So we need a system that can accurately adjust for the two-way flow of energy and also use battery storage in conjunction with that. We're also, of course, supporting economic growth. We have a lot of businesses and industries that are very supportive of renewable energy. Some, in fact, have that as one of their base bedrock standards and values, is supporting the renewable energy industry. And we think that it's important that we move quickly so we can accommodate those kind of needs that are wanted by industries and businesses that either are already here or are thinking about locating here. So we're looking at powering technology, powering the economy, as I said, empowering customer choice. For the interdependence that we have with the, with our industry, with our grid now, it does require things like smart metering, battery storage, and so on and so forth. Let me talk about the gas rate case that we have recently filed. You might know that over the last 10 years or so, the gas prices, natural gas prices have been greatly variable. And right now, we're somewhat at a historic low, not completely the low, but we're very low in terms of where it's been in the recent past. So we know two things. We know, number one, our customers are going to increase. We know it's likely that the value of natural gas is also going to increase, the cost of it's going to increase. So we're looking at actually investing in natural gas fields with companies that already do this, as a joint venture opportunity. We're looking at partnering for things like property acquisition, processes for future property acquisition, tariff changes, and so on, to allow us to be able to do this. And it's all about keeping the prices affordable for our customers. That's what we do. When we have lower gas prices, we're able to pass that savings along to our customers, because that's, you've probably seen various cost adjustments. Sometimes they go up as a commodity, sometimes the prices go up, sometimes they go down, and we pass that along to our customers. I think some of the most exciting things we're doing is what we call innovative clean technology projects, and we have two of these, and they're battery storage, battery demonstration projects. For a number of years, we've been doing research at the SolarTech Technology Acceleration Center out in Aurora on battery storage, because we always hear, and we always intuitively know, when you, when solar energy is generated, it's available during the day, but it's not necessarily available at night, it's not necessarily available when there's cloud cover. So how do you store that? We've been doing battery research for a long time, a number of years. Of course, you read of other companies doing that, and you maybe sometimes think, I wonder if Xcel Energy is actually thinking ahead and doing those kinds of things? Well, we are. We've been doing this kind of testing for some time, just like we've been working with the National Center for Atmospheric Research on wind forecasting. We've got wind forecasting down to 10-minute increments, so we know when we're likely to be able to put more wind on our system so we can power down the generation of electricity through gas or coal or some other means and bring up that wind energy. And so we continue to do this, and I think the next thing that really makes a lot of sense for us is to actually start adding these batteries to our system. We're developing a partnership with Panasonic Corporation, they're going to be developing a facility out by DIA, and this facility will have solar panels on their parking garages, I understand. And they want to have their own grid, their own electric grid, their own microgrid system, if you will, and they want a large battery to store that solar energy and then use it when it's most effective. They can use it during peak times of peak usage, they could use it at night, but the reality is, it helps balance the system as well, because you can only put so much voltage on the system. So if we're sending system, sending voltage one direction and others are sending voltage on that line as well, the line can only handle so much, and it's, and this is something that's really true of another project we're talking about near Stapleton, where we'd actually put a series of batteries on one of the large feeder cables that provide electricity to Stapleton. So in this particular community, we have a very large penetration of solar energy, and I think it's about 20% or so of the rooftops have solar energy capability, and that creates voltage for our system, and you can only put so much of that voltage on our system before it's no, it no longer functions, and we can't accept any more voltage. So we're using this, these pilot programs to test out how we can serve, how we can save that energy and make it even more efficient and cost-effective for our customers, because if they can use that electricity that they've saved during certain times of day where it actually costs more to generate electricity, then it makes sense to do that. So we're very hopeful that these projects will help pave the way, they're pilot projects, and we think they'll pave the way for a future in our energy production and in energy management. Modern grid is, as I mentioned, a modern grid is critically important for the two-way power flow. One of the projects that we have is a pilot program where we pilot actually 10,000 smart meters the first year, and then the next year, we'd have pilot, I think, over 15,000 the next year, additional smart meters that we'd add to our system. This is a pretty exciting program here, it's LED streetlights. We've had cities ask us for years, when are you going to have LED streetlights? We just have to have the latest modern technology. Well, the reality, until recently, unless you've been able to get some sort of a federal grant or some funding from someplace else, they just really aren't, they aren't efficient from a perspective of being very expensive. They've been, these fixtures, these LED fixtures have cost literally hundreds of dollars, $500, $600 a piece. Now they're down to maybe a couple hundred dollars a piece, depending on the wattage. So now it makes sense economically for us to make available LED streetlights to our cities. We, in concert, working with our cities over the last couple of years, developed two programs that were approved by the Public Utilities Commission last year. One program, which is Option A, is where we would come into a city like Northland, and we would replace all of the Cobra Head light fixtures with LEDs. Now currently, you have high-pressure sodium, and we put LED lights in all those fixtures at no cost to the city, and you would save about 5% to 7% on your electric bill for each light. The rates are already set, we discussed all the rates many times with the cities, and cities intervened at our Public Utilities Commission hearing, and that's where it ended up, and they're currently the rates. There is Option B, would mean that you would pay for the fixture, and you'd pay for the installation of the fixture, and you'd save up to about 19% on your rates, depending on the wattage of the fixture. So this is a program that we have high hopes for, you know, it's really moving us into, I think, where we need to be as a country, as a company, and it's something that has been really demanded by our cities and asked for by our cities for a long time now. We'll be having a discussion soon with David and Kent and his team on this program, and try to answer all their, all their questions. Next thing is Phase Two rate case. We filed in January what we call a Phase Two rate case. It's not a case where we're actually raising rates, it's where we're distributing those rates, how they're actually allocated, depending on the type of end user, but it does some other things as well. The Phase Two rate case will break out the charge for using the grid. Currently, you just have an energy charge, you don't know what part of that, if you look at your bill, is the energy price for generating the electricity, and what part is for the grid, which actually delivers your electricity. We're trying to break that out into something that's understandable, so we'll be able to add different forms of renewable energy on the system, and then you'll be able to add your own renewable energy on the system, and you'll pay a certain charge for the grid, and it'll make it more, I think, fair for everyone that uses the grid. There's also some other things in Phase Two that I think are important, and one that I think is going to be particularly important to Northland based on the discussion we've had a few years ago, and that is, you might remember, we were talking about the Christmas lights on your streetlight poles, I know Carol, you remember that, and some others --
I think we all remember.
Do you remember? They probably all remember that. Well, we had a few years ago decided that we were going to develop a program, which we did, that would require you to, you know, sign an agreement and provide some liability insurance and on and on and on. It was, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't that well-received, to be honest, but what we have done, neither here nor a lot of places, to be honest with you. And so what we've done is, is we've put that into this rate case, there'll be no requirement that you sign an agreement, there'll be no requirement that you provide insurance, liability insurance. All we'd ask is that you tell us where you want to put the Christmas lights or banners, we'll inspect the poles, be sure they're structurally sound, and you put them on there, and you agree not to destroy our equipment, basically. And so.
Preston, in regards to taking up to five years to have the LEDs installed, if you choose to, with the, with the cost of the LED lights going down drastically, just even recently, are you locked in when you sign up, and then it could take up to five years? Or what happens if it could take up to five years and the cost of the LED lights continues to drop?
Well, there's something in the tariffs of the agreement that means that we're going to revisit the program every few years, because we know that modern technology is going to change. We know that the LED light fixtures might continue to go down in price, although they're pretty low now. So we're going to have to revisit those rates every few years, and it could be that rates might even lower in a few years. And, you know, 10 years from now, who knows? LEDs may be passe, there may be some new technology, we just don't know. I will tell you about this, though, that we do expect a lot of cities to sign up for the program, and it's going to take us probably three to five years to be able to make all those conversions throughout Colorado, because we have over 200,000 lights that we need to convert if everybody jumps on board, and the cities that jump on more quickly will be able to have their lights changed out more quickly. So if it's of interest to Northland, again, I'm going to be talking to Dave about that and front out in the details, it would be probably wise to move forward more quickly. But we will be revisiting the rates and structures as we move on. The next thing I wanted to mention was, is Solar Connect, and this is a program where we would produce solar energy, and you might know that some companies, again, because of their own bedrock company values, they like to be able to indicate to their customers that they're getting their energy 100% solar, but they may not have the capability, they don't have the room on their rooftops to put the panels on, you know, they don't, maybe they're leasing a building, similar with residents, you may be leasing your, leasing an apart, you know, renting an apartment or something, or have a rooftop that's not oriented, so you can put panels on your roof. But if you want solar, this is a program that would enable you to buy up to 100% solar energy, solar-produced energy, and then be a slight, you know, charge. We haven't worked out the monthly charge difference, but it would be a slight increase in your monthly charge, but you'd be able to indicate and demonstrate that you're getting your electricity completely from solar energy. And we're planning to add an incremental 50 megawatts solar farm to our existing 170 megawatts of solar generation. So we're going to dedicate a solar farm just for this particular program. Now, this doesn't mean that we're cutting, you know, ending other programs like Solar Rewards, where we provide incentives for people to put solar panels on their rooftops. Doesn't mean we're going to end Solar Guards, right? In fact, we're stepping up our participation and our support of those programs, but this is just, this gets back to customer empowerment, customer options, it's just essentially one more customer option that we see that would be potentially advantageous to our customers. So bottom line is that, you know, we're investing in a comprehensive plan now. We want to be sure that our rates are competitive while we bring these new technologies and new opportunities online. It's something that we value as a company, our rates are about average, I think maybe even a little bit below average if you look nationally. Our reliability is way above average, I think we're in the top quartile in terms of reliability. But we want to be sure that we bring these new technologies and these new options on our system the right way, and be sure that it helps with our economic development, helps us be attractive for economic development purposes, and we want to be sure that we really do this in concert with our customers, our regulators, our regulators, our elected officials, and really everyone in the industry. So thanks for listening to me, and I just wanted to come out and say a few words about these new programs, this new sort of future as to where we're going as a company, and look forward to working with you and bringing more information as we start to provide more implementation into this program. So I'd be available for questions if you have any.
Questions, anybody?
Or did I bore you to death? I'm not sure.
Didn't bore us to death.
You know, anything for the updates on the programs, it was really interesting, and good to know that we can work towards being a more green city, too, by working with you, so appreciate it, and maybe we'll see you at the CML Conference again.
Thank you so much. We absolutely will be there, look forward to it.
Great, thanks, Preston.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is from Kathy Immel with the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District.
Hello, everyone. I'm the Adams County Representative, appointed by the Adams County Commissioners for the SCFD Board. The SCFD Board is 11 people, there's a county representative, four agents, seven counties in the district, and then four community board appointees. So, do you read this?
Yeah.
I'm just going to introduce things a little bit, tell you kind of what SCFD means to Adams County and to Northland in particular, and then I turn it over to my co-presenter here, Jim Harrington, who is actually the Chair of Citizens for Arts to Zoo, which is the group that, the 501(c)(4) group that is going to be running the campaign, assuming this is on the ballot this year. So just to give you a little background, since the SCFD was created, and the SCFD collects one penny sales tax for every $10, so it's a 0.1% sales tax. This is, we're asking for a reauthorization of this, it was first created in 1988, it's been reauthorized twice overwhelmingly by the citizens, and what we hope is that it will get reauthorized again, because it has brought tremendous support to our cultural science facilities and small organizations, and you've seen the benefit here. In Adams County, we've seen about $15 million that we've received since the inception of the SCFD program, and almost half of that has been just in the last 10 years, because Adams County's growing. The proportion of the money comes back based on the money that's spent in the county. So for our Tier Three groups, the small organizations that you deal with, it really does pay for you to shop local, because that's how that money comes back to us in Adams County. And Joyce Downing is the Chair of the Adams County Cultural Council, which distributes those funds to the small organizations, the Tier Three organizations in Adams County. And I've served with her for seven years on that same council, so I know Joyce really well, and then she bailed, got me hooked up to do this and said, no, I'm out of here. So anyway, I'm going to turn it over to, well, let me just mention one more thing, you all have done very well with the Northland Arts Foundation. It has by far, of the 18 organizations that have their headquarters in Adams County, by far the largest percentage of funds received has been received by the Northland Arts Foundation, almost like a half a million dollars in the last 10 years alone. So kudos to you all, and I go around Northland, I live in Westminster, so I go through here all the time, and I see all the art that's out there, and always, I wish we'd get more art in Westminster, so we could copy you guys. And I'm going to turn it over to Jim, and he's going to give you this update on where we are with the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District reauthorization process, and talk about anything that you want to talk about, because he was on the SCFD Board for about 10 years?
Six years.
Six years?
She liked it.
And he was also the Chair of the Board, and then last year, he agreed, for some crazy reason, to chair the task force that the Board put together to bring forth to the Board recommendations on what changes might be needed or appropriate to make for this provision of the statute as it goes to the voters. So he now chairs Citizens Arts Zoo, and that's his new hat, and I'm going to turn it over to Jim.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. I think she pretty much covered my background. Everything I do is a volunteer capacity, so I just believe in the arts, I believe in the regional cooperation that SCFD is all about, and so that's why I'm willing to do what I do and come out and make these presentations and tell people about SCFD. SCFD was originally authorized, for those of you that are not real familiar with it, originally authorized back in 1988, and so it's been around for over 25 years. And it was reauthorized in 1994, which was a 12-year reauthorization, taking it up to 2006. In 2004, the district went back to the voters, and it is the seven-county Denver metropolitan area, but went back to the voters in 2004 to extend that authorization from 2006 up to 2018. We are now planning to go to the ballot here in 2016 to extend that authorization from 2018 out to 2030, so another 12-year authorization. Well, to get ready for a new authorization, there was a task force that was put together, and as Kathy said, I ended up chairing that, they asked who wanted to chair it, and nobody raised their hand, and I think I sneezed, and so they thought I was raising my hand, so I ended up chairing that. And, but the task force was charged with looking at all of the provisions of SCFD and making recommendations on things that could be done to improve SCFD going forward. And also, a big part of that was to take a look at the funding distribution. The funding formula has changed every time that there's been a reauthorization, and in every one of these changes, there's been a little bit more money allocated to tiers two and three. Let me just briefly describe that for those of you that are not familiar with this. Within SCFD, there's five Tier One organizations, the Zoo, the Botanic Gardens, the Art Museum, Museum of Nature and Science, and the Denver Center for Performing Arts. So five Tier One organizations. There are 28 Tier Two organizations spread throughout the seven-county metropolitan area, and there are 242 Tier Three organizations, so you add all of that up, and there's 275 organizations spread throughout the seven counties that are recipients of SCFD funding. How much money are we talking about? Well, in this most recent year, that penny on $10 tax, that's all it is, a penny on $10, generated $55 million. So that's $55 million that is being divvied up among 275 recipient organizations, okay? So that in a nutshell is what SCFD is. Well, a big part of our work, as I said, within the task force, was looking at the distribution formula and figuring out if there were any changes that needed to be made. One of the big concerns had to do with diversity and equity. In other words, there's a lot of small groups that are within that Tier Three, that Tier Three umbrella, and many of them do in fact cater to minority communities, do cater to underserved communities, and they are out there within the seven counties. So as we looked at the distribution formula, we decided that some changes were necessary to take some money out of what had been the Tier One distribution formula, reducing the Tier One amount, increasing the amounts that would go to two and three. So I'm going to talk to you about exactly what kind of changes were made, if I can get this to go, there we go. First of all, the task force, there were 18 people on the task force, there were three people, three members of the task force representing Tier One organizations, there were four people on the task force representing Tier Two organizations, six people representing Tier Three, two former Board members, of which I was one, two current Board members, and a community member from the foundation of the community. So as you can see, all three tiers were represented, and obviously, as we negotiated and discussed and debated exactly what the new formula should look like, everybody had a chance to participate and weigh in. The objectives that were set forth for our task force work are shown here. Evaluate the current funding in light of the growth in numbers. When we first started out, there was only like seven Tier Two organizations, and I said, there's now 28. In Tier Three, I forget how many there were at the beginning, but it was only like 40 or 50, I think, and it's now up to 240. So there has been significant growth. And then we were also asked to address funding shortfalls affecting some And then we were also asked to address funding shortfalls affecting some Tier 2 organizations and large Tier 3 organizations. And to provide additional funding in the first year, that was a very important objective. In other words, don't do something that's going to take care of it just 12 years from now. Let's try to do something that's going to adjust the formula and give them some help in the very first year of reauthorization, which is 2018. And to recommend changes that are incremental. In other words, SCFD's been quite successful, and so don't throw the baby out of the bathwater and try to start over and create something new and different that would significantly alter how SCFD functions. So, those were the objectives. This slide shows you where we are today. This is this current formula. Remember I mentioned that $55 million number? Well, back when the reauthorization occurred in 2004, it was decided to do and have a base amount, and to have one distribution formula up to that base number, and then a different distribution formula for amounts over that base. And so that base was set at $38 million. Here's what these numbers over here represent. This is the percentage, 65.5% that goes to Tier 1, 21% to Tier 2, and 13.5% to Tier 3 for that first $38 million. For everything above $38 million, you can see that the distribution is a little bit different. So, here's the change that we came up with. That is to say, to do what is shown as the new, keep the same base, but for the amounts below the base, decrease Tier 1 from 65.5% down to 64%. And for those amounts over the base, decrease Tier 1 from 64% down to 57%. So, that total change, that total change, projecting it forward with some modeling that we did, showed that there would be a total redistribution from Tier 1 to Tiers 2 and 3 on a cumulative basis over the period 2018 to 2030 of $37 million. So it's a pretty significant shift in funding from Tier 1 to Tiers 2 and 3. Now, we had those, we had the bifurcated numbers, so people are always interested, well, you know, that's fine, but I can't keep track of all of that. What are the actual percentages? And if you do it on a blended or combined basis, you can see that Tier 1 in the year 2014 got 65, 65.1% of the total amount of SCFD funds. Tier 2 got 21.3, and Tier 3 got 7, got 13.6%. And by 2030, by the end of the reauthorization period, the Tier 1 share will decline by about 5 percentage points, and you can see the increase that occurs for Tiers 2 and 3. So, that in a nutshell are the changes that were made. This shows what the distributions look like and how they are going to grow. You can see that it's kind of uneven as you go from 2000 out to where we are today. But from 2015 to 2030, Tier 3 is almost going to double. From $7 million available to be distributed to those 240 organizations, up to 13.5 million roughly. So a fairly significant increase. Tier 2 is going to increase based upon our projections, from 11.3 million in 2015 up to 21 million by the year 2030. So again, almost a doubling of Tier 2. For Tier 1, is there an increase? Yes, there is. It's about a 50% increase from 34 million up to 52 million. So where did we come up with these crazy numbers? Well, a lot of discussion, a lot of debate, and what we ultimately decided is that we tried to come up with a formula whereby all three tiers would be funded at inflation. All three tiers would be funded at inflation, and for amounts above inflation, most of those, in other words, real dollars, most of those real dollars would go to Tiers 2 and 3. A few of the real dollars would go to Tier 1, but most of it would go to Tiers 2 and 3. Now, the first year change, remember I told you that we consider that to be important? In the very first year, notwithstanding the fact that we anticipate that the revenue available to SCFD will increase year over year, nevertheless, Tier 1 will get approximately half a million dollars less in the first year of reauthorization, 2018 compared with what they will have received in 2017. Whereas Tier 2 is going to grow by 1.5 million dollars, and Tier 3 is going to grow by a million dollars. So that's fairly significant. You can see it's over 13% growth for both 2 and 3, year over year, in that very first year of reauthorization. Now, I mentioned inflation. The black line here is the inflation line. What we did is we went back and looked over the 10-year period from 2004 to 2014. Inflation for the Denver Boulder Greeley Metropolitan Area, the CPI grew at 2.42%. That's the compounded growth. And so for our modeling purposes, we assumed that we would have similar kinds of growth on average compounded over the reauthorization period, so 2.42%. How did the revenues grow over that same period? The revenues grew at an average of 3.6%. So our modeling had 3.6% revenue growth, 2.4% inflation. Okay? And so, it takes a lot of dollars to keep each of these organizations up to inflation. You can see that based upon the modeling that we did, Tier 1 is going to grow by 2 point, Tier 1 revenues are going to grow by 2.98% compounded growth. Tier 2 is going to grow by 4.65% compounded growth, and Tier 3, 4.73%. So fairly significant growth. What does that translate to in terms of dollars? Well, I told you that most of the real dollars, everything above this inflation line, is going to go to 2 and 3. You see that there's 75.5 million dollars of real dollars available over cumulative over that period of 2018 to 2030. About 10 million of that is going to go to Tier 1, about 40 million is going to go to Tier 2, and about 26 million is going to go to Tier 3. So, most of the inflationary, most of the growth in revenues, real dollar growth over the next 12 years, in fact, it's going to go to Tiers 2 and 3, and it's going to allow them to address some of the issues that they faced. Now, this shows the combined numbers. You can see inflation, it takes 86 million to fund Tier 1 at inflation, it takes 28 million for Tier 2, and 18 million for Tier 3. And then the next column shows the real dollars, and it shows the total. Okay? And now, these are the dollars, in 2017, there's a certain amount of revenue, and we projected that to be about $58 million, I believe. And so if you assume that it was $58 million each and every year, 58 million every year, and then you apply the inflation and the growth to that and compare the no-growth scenario, in other words, $58 million every year, compare that with what you get when you apply, when you apply that 3.6% growth, and the difference results in that 290 million. So that's what that number is. Now, one of the options that was available to the task force was to do nothing. In other words, just leave the formula exactly as it is. And that was one of the options that we did discuss in the task force and did look at. And had we left it exactly as is, had we not made any changes, this would have been the real dollar distribution. And you can see that most of the real dollars would have gone to Tier 1, 47 million, with only 17 going to Tier 2, and only 11 going to Tier 3. So comparing what we did with what would have been the case, had we not made any changes, you can see that the changes were rather dramatic. Okay? So that's the purpose of this slide, is to show you that the real dollar distribution did change dramatically. Now, was this an easy sell to the Tier 1s? No? No? I mean, we had to actually convince them that they could still survive if they gave up $37 million cumulatively. And so it was not an easy sell, but we got them there. Now, subsequently, some people who advocated for a different position within the task force, and were not successful, have come back through the back door trying to get what the task force refused to do, and that is to have a 50-30-20 distribution by the year 2030. And this is a group called FACE, and they made their presentation and this number to a variety of communities and to a lot of legislators and so forth. So, the purpose of this slide is just to show what would happen if in fact their 50-30-20 had gone through. Now, this 50-30-20, I only still include it in here because that's, it's not really on the table anymore, but there is a lot of discussion going on down at the Capitol with a lot of lobbying to try to redirect a lot of additional monies, in fact, another $25 million from Tier 1 just to Tier 3. And so, remember, if it's 37 million that's already redirected, they want another 27, 25 on top of that. Now, I guess the point to be made from this slide is that doing a real dollar analysis, where we ended up, the red, is almost exactly in the middle compared with where we are today versus where the FACE group wanted to be. Where we ended up is right about in the middle. What's this called? It's called compromise. And that's exactly what the process was that the task force engaged in, was an exercise in compromise. Anytime you get money on the table, you don't get people to move without everybody giving them a little bit of something. And that's exactly what happened. Conclusions, the formula change recommended by the task force is a sound compromise. The task force recommendation allows all tiers to cover inflation. The task force recommendation provides significant real dollar growth totaling $66 million for Tiers 2 and 3. Task force recommendation provides a significant increase totaling $2.5 million in the very first year. And the FACE formula as well as that other proposal that is now kind of percolating over in the Capitol, causes significant cuts in Tier 1 programs. And if that's the case, then probably citizen access to the Tier 1s. In other words, it's a lot of free days that they're involved in and so forth. Cut the programs too deeply, guess what goes away, those kinds of things. So that was a very major consideration part of the task force. And the task force recommendation avoids extreme changes which would be harmful to the iconic institutions that'd be in the zoo, Botanic Gardens, Art Museum, and so forth. So, that concludes the presentation. What questions do you have? Yes?
Well, I have a couple of questions for you. Was there any thought on the task force to not sunsetting this and just maintain it permanent? Keep going? And the second one, any thought to increasing the amount of tax? You know, one cent on $10 isn't very much, and doubling that would do a huge amount of good and give all of our facilities and districts even larger some to run their programs.
Yeah, we looked at both of those items. With regard to the sunset, it ranged all the way from, let's just see the crease of, let's do six years this time instead of 12, up to, on the other extreme, it was, let's make it permanent. And then there were others like, how about 16 years, how about 20 years? And the feeling was that there's a certain level of accountability that goes with the reauthorization. Now, I can tell you, being intimately involved now in this reauthorization process is painful. And it's not easy. You're dealing with some people down at the state Capitol who have a variety of agendas, and you've got to try to work your way through all of that. So it's a painful process. But when you do have reauthorization, you do have to go back to the voters on a periodic basis. That forces accountability, and it takes away a sense of entitlement that otherwise can kind of creep in if it does become permanent. So that was why we decided to recommend to the Board. The Board did approve an extension of 12 years rather than making it permanent. With regard to increasing it, we're talking about a lot of money right now. As I said, $55 million in the year 2015, projected to grow to about $88 million by the year 2030. Cumulatively, it's about $900 million. That's a lot of money. And to even think about doubling that, even though it's only two pennies on $10 instead of just one, it sort of invites the anti-tax activists to come out of the woodwork because it is an increase in the tax. And there is a difference between, in the eyes of a voter and in the eyes of the opponents, there is a difference between extending an existing tax versus increasing the tax. So, those were the considerations that led me where we ended up.
Jim, if I can also add, the Board also felt that because of the way it has to be worded on the ballot, if it's an increase in tax, it has to actually start out that way and say, you know, "We're proposing to increase this tax," which, you know, puts a big target right on your back, as opposed to extending an existing setup. And so, in terms of funding, the dollars, we are in a good position, I mean, compared to where we were in just 2008. Our numbers have improved dramatically in Adams County. I can speak specifically to Adams County, North Line in particular. But, so that was one of the thoughts that the Board had. The other thing, the Board also felt, and to your first question, that it is important to revisit and get feedback from the constituency periodically, and allow you to tweak the formula or tweak the way things are done in the statute to adjust for changes that happen. And we aren't going to be able to anticipate what things are going to look like in 2030. We can barely anticipate what's going to look like two years from now. And if you listen to the XL guy, you know, he's talking about what's going to be the difference, you know, from LED lights, what's going to be the next technology. We don't know what things are going to be like in the next year. So, being able to revisit that was an important thing for the Board.
Okay?
I was just going to ask you if you have any idea how it's going to pan out at the legislature, how it's looking so far and...
Very good question. It's a dynamic situation. I think it's almost changing every day. The bill was introduced in the Senate early February, and I think it was the 24th of February. It passed the Senate on third reading. So it's made it through the Senate and with overwhelming support. In the House, it's a little bit of a different story. The opponents have gotten to a couple of the key people in the leadership in the House, and so there's some effort to significantly alter things. It passed out of the Senate with an admonition from the President of the Senate that there will be no amendments. And so the House is talking about amendments, maybe significant amendments. And so you've got two competing forces there. And so, we're working hard to try to bring peace, but, and to offer up some alternative solutions that will not amend the bill. Because frankly, if it gets amended by, I think President Cadman was very serious when he said, "No amendments." He said he likes it the way it is, and his Senate colleagues, all but a couple of them, that it was good the way that it was, that it made some significant changes to benefit Tiers 2 and 3. They like that, but without devastating Tier 1. And so, so that's an interesting question. I hope that we're able to successfully work our way through the issues and come up with a compromise that's going to be acceptable to all.
I think one thing too, when Jim says opponents, there haven't been any opponents to the reauthorization. When you talk about opponents, it's people that want to see a different distribution of the dollars. But from the standpoint of support for reauthorization, that has been pretty much new animals across the board in both houses.
Yep.
You got bill movers?
16-16, Senate Bill, SB 16-016.
Any other questions?
Let me add one last thing. Just, we did presentations like this to the Adams County Commissioners who then signed a resolution support. We also did that with the City of Westminster, who then subsequently signed a resolution support. So, if you have questions amongst yourselves about what can we do, that is one of the things that you can consider, is sending in a resolution of support. It's certainly not required, but that is something that we have, Jim's group, the board doesn't usually ask for that.
You know, I would only add to that, that we have received endorsements, resolutions from almost all of the cities and towns throughout the seven county metropolitan area. We received endorsements from six of the seven counties. We're still working on JFCO. We have received endorsements from all of the major chambers of commerce throughout the seven county metropolitan area. And so, this is not a Denver versus the suburbs issue in any way, shape, or form. The suburbs have been extremely supportive, and the business community has been equally supportive, Colorado Business Committee for the Arts, Casey, all of the various business groups. So, the opposition is centered, it's a few people, and who've got the ear of some leadership within the House. But in terms of the community at large, very supportive of the bill as it has been presented.
Thank you. Do you have any questions as you go through your process? Always available to answer any of them since I am your representative for Adams County.
So, we would really welcome your support.
Thank you very much. Thank you both. I think that I would just like to add on behalf of the NHF that they received over $98,000 this year for funding from SCFD, which is a large amount, and between what they get from SCFD and what they get for our per capita that we put in, that's the majority of their funding. So, you sure would hate to see programs like that disappear across the board, all over the seven counties. So, what you do for us is great, and we appreciate it. So, thank you. You also benefit because of the theater, because there's a lot of other organizations that fund their programming to Adams County, and they put it on and have a theater here in Northland. So, it's not just about just the organization facing Northland and also getting that $100,000 to...
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, Northland Food Access Assessment. I see, there's Becky, I didn't see you. Becky and Brooke.
Thank you, Council. Becky Smith here, presenting the Northland Food Access Assessment. This process really started in February of 2015 when Libra Colorado put out a call for proposals to all of the Heal Cities and Towns Campaign participants. City of Northland joined the Heal Cities and Towns Campaign, Healthy Eating, Active Living, in July of 2014. We responded to their call for proposals, and we were one of two municipalities that were granted technical assistance to draft and write a food access assessment. The food access assessment's goal is really to identify if there's gaps in the community to healthy food access to our residents, if we have anything missing in our food environment, and what role the city can play to improve healthy food consumption of our residents. So, sorry. With that, I have Wendy Peters Machini here. She was the author of the assessment and is also the Director of Food Policy Systems, Food Systems for Libra Colorado. And she'll be here as support to answer any questions this evening. Several methods were used to draft the report. We used information from the U.S. Census. We used information from Tri-County Health Department that they sent us for women, infant, and children programs that provide supplement to people in need for healthy food. If you could explain maybe the WIC program a little bit more, if anyone has questions about that specifically. We did gather information about our existing community gardens. We used information from the U.S. Department of Agriculture about their supplemental nutritional assistant programs. We also gathered all of the information that we had regarding our existing food retailers, both restaurants, grocery stores, corner stores, anyone that offered food. We looked at connectivity to those food options, as well as mapped out our city streets, trails, and park systems to see how people could get to those. We conducted a community survey that asked residents how they were accessing food, how much vegetables and fruits they were consuming every day, what grocery stores they were going to, to understand, are residents using the food systems that exist in Northland, or are they going outside of Northland to access the things that they need? We also conducted several focus groups through the Northland Heal Committee and the Northland Youth Commission, as well as key informant interviews within the community to get insight into how Northland was doing in terms of our food environment. With that information, we were able to gather several key findings about Northland and how we're currently doing with food access, as well as create recommendations. This report is really the first step in understanding the baseline of our food environment, so that we know where to focus policies as we move forward. We know where our gaps are. Without having that baseline information, it's really challenging to understand where we should be focusing our efforts. So, included with your staff memo is the executive summary. It also states that if you want the entire food access assessment, that's available upon request. It's also online at northland.org/heel. We're currently asking the community to provide feedback through the month of March. We included a short Connection article as well, requesting that feedback. And then, we are recommending that the City Council adopt the assessment by resolution at a future date, once that community feedback period is done. I can quickly go over the key findings. Basically, what I do is just list them right now. If you guys have specific questions, we can answer those. The key findings do have supporting data in the executive summary, and then a lot of supporting data in the full report. So, if you did want to dig deeper into how we got to those findings, all of the information is available. And with the recommendations, the report does include examples on how we can implement those recommendations, as well as how the recommendations address the key findings from the report. So, the top nine key findings are that we do have food-related health issues in Northland. The food environments could better support youth. The food environment may cater more to travelers in Northland than to the residents, being where the restaurants are located and grocery stores, so it's really to the person passing through the city. Connectivity to food could be expanded through wayfinding programs or helping people know where their food, healthy food options are available. Opportunities exist to enhance nutritious foods, systems, and schools. Northland has few healthy or culturally relevant food options for our Latino population. Residents feel disconnected from fresh food options such as gardens and markets. Federal food assistance programs can be leveraged in the city, and that there may be additional food insecure populations that haven't been identified in this report that the city may want to explore even further. Recommendations made to address those findings were that we could develop and disseminate monthly Heal messages through different sources, including the Connection, social media activities that the Heal Committee is doing. We could promote home gardening, enhance visibility to existing markets and gardens, again, through wayfinding and signage, advertising that they're going on in the city. We could develop and adopt healthy city procurement policies, allow residential food sales, increase the availability of fresh produce at schools, explore healthy retail partnerships at corner stores, and assess primary barriers to SNAP enrollment. Again, that's just the highlight, and the report includes a lot of additional information and examples on how that can be implemented. So, at this point, I would ask if there's any specific questions about the information provided, or the full report about the methods that we used to reach those findings and recommendations.
Anybody? I have one. So, I went online, and I looked at the assessment. I even ran it off, and I didn't get a chance to read it all, since I just did today, but just the little bit that I read, it was a lot of work, and so, thank you for that, and I'm sure you had a lot to do with it Wendy. But there's a lot of really interesting information in it, so I recommend, if you haven't read it, it's really interesting what you came up with. I really like some of the strategies that you have. I love all the public input that you're asking for, and all of the different community events that you would like to be at. I think that's kind of a no-brainer, and you've already been doing that, so I think that's really awesome. And I like the Larson Park idea that's coming up in May. That's really a great event. So, I just kind of wanted to give you, you know, some accolades on it, because I think it was done really well, and I'm sure it was really time-consuming. There's a lot of information in the report, so...
Thank you.
It's under 50 pages, so it's not too...
And it's easy reading, it's not complicated. It's not like a public work document.
Move the pack.
Just saying. Any other questions for Becky? No? Is everyone in agreement to move it forward to a resolution? They would like us to adopt the assessment by a resolution at an upcoming council meeting. So, they'd like to adopt their strategies and the food assessment that they've done, because that's going to further that you can do more work with it? Yes.
Right. It just supports the recommendations in here, so that when we come back with an idea that's in this document, we can also say, well, it was supported through the Heal Resolution, it's also supported in the food access assessment, and that's why we're pursuing this idea and bringing it to you guys again. So...
Is there any opposition to bring it forward as a resolution? No? No? Not hearing any, so we're going to move it forward. Okay.
Can I add one thing about that as well? I'm not the Heal Cities and Towns Campaign Director, although she works at the board, I do, but, and I'm sure you're all well aware of this, but as you pass additional policies or amendments or legislative amendments, it does make you eligible to advance in the campaign. So, this might be something we can track, and so, the more things you adopt, then we can advance the campaign, and we can help do like immediate push on it, just to bring something really good attention to, like, what you're doing. So, we will continue to track this and be in touch about that as well. So, you should get the kudos for this.
Right. No, thanks for the explanation, appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, and also, you mentioned sort of the next item, which is the Heal Committee Work Plan, in which the resident committee, made up of seven resident members and seven staff members from six different departments, created this work plan, including some of the recommendations from the food access assessment, but also focusing on the active living and community engagement pieces that are really important to them. So, the Larson Park activities, really what this plan is doing is it's highlighting what we want to look at, it's not committing to anything at this point. It's identified what we think we can implement right away, versus what we would have to come back to you guys for, for budget considerations. And if we do come back with that, what we would do is highlight how we think it's a health benefit, how it will improve the built environment, to improve access to either activities or healthy eating, any scientific or evidence-based data that supports that, and then what the budget request would be based on required resources or materials, so that you guys have all the information to make those decisions. So, that's what's highlighted in the work plan that you touched on, which includes this year, basically piggybacking on things that we've already started in the city, a lot of projects that we've already kicked off, where we think we can integrate some of these concepts, as well as promote around the city Heal Concepts, being the CDBG new park equipment that we have opening up in April, I believe. We'll piggyback in May, May 21st on the Kids to Parks Day, and have Heal Committee members there to show people how to use the adult fitness equipment. We've also talked about other ways to promote that grand opening of the park, and encourage residents to come and enjoy the equipment, so... But if you had any questions about the actual work plan, I can definitely entertain those now. Otherwise, we are just requesting any feedback that you guys have at this point, because it's been over a year since we've checked in with you, as well as asking for a council liaison for the committee, just to be part of the correspondence at the minimum, so that we have that connection between our committee and what we're doing, and what communication you guys get. So...
So, any comments on the work that they've done so far, besides what I mentioned?
I'm just impressed, yeah. I'm very impressed.
How about anything with, like, the interconnection with the bike paths and all? Is that something that's an ongoing project, or has it started, not started?
It's not started yet. It is one thing that we have budgeted for this year, is potentially starting, just working out timing with some of our other projects, but we are hoping to kick off a bike and pedestrian master plan that would look at how our street networks connect to our trail networks, and get people to different amenities in the city, as well as regionally. So, that project would be one that the Heal Committee would participate on as a stakeholder group, and definitely provide feedback on where they think that project could improve active living in the city.
And then, on the question of a council liaison, what type of time commitment are you asking for the liaison?
So, really, what I imagine is definitely being part of our email correspondence. We do a lot of email back and forth, sending out packets with all the materials. We do meet once a month on the third Wednesday for one to one and a half hours, and so, that meeting would be open to them as well, when they're able to participate in that meeting.
So, any takers while we're here?
So, you can throw my name in, anybody else?
Anybody else interested, and then you're going to have to draw straws?
Ooh, look at all the interest you have, Becky, that's a good thing.
Excellent, yeah. So, how do we determine when you have all this interest?
I don't know.
I would suggest that perhaps it might be a separate conversation down the road for council to consider.
Okay.
But I think what we would be seeking tonight is just to get consensus to have that conversation down the road, and if you're willing to do that.
Okay.
I just have a quick comment, Becky. I have, not really a question, but a comment on the community gardens. Has there been any interest in promoting residential gardens?
Yeah, actually, that is one of the recommendations from the food access assessment, and there is different ways that we can do that, suggestions such as the city sponsoring container gardens.
Or a garden box.
Or a garden in a box, where we could partner with a local, like Lowe's or someone potentially, and provide those materials at a subsidized rate for people that are interested. We've also talked about including policies in the development regulations rewrite that would allow the sale of cottage goods. So, it would allow people to produce food in their garden, and then sell that to individuals that are interested in purchasing them.
I have a question about, the Cottage Food Act is already passed, so you're looking at additional efforts on that?
Right.
Like, put a booth out from their yard or something like that, or what are you looking at there?
So, the zoning ordinance actually regulates what people can do as home occupations as well, and right now, it wouldn't allow the sale of cottage goods, even though the state allows the sale of cottage goods. So, cottage goods are regulated through the State Health Department, but currently, the City of Northland doesn't allow that. So, it's just, the two regulations don't communicate to each other, but our regulations actually would trump what the state's saying that we can do. They just regulate it more from the health aspect of any sort of disease outbreaks, or what can be sold.
And this is one of those things that the zoning code update is looking... And this is one of those things that the zoning code update is looking to address as well, is that we have, we have a basically sort of 30-year-old version of what home occupation regulations are, and so part of this process is to take into account recommendations like this from the HEAL committee into the zoning code process to sort of better understand what options we can consider.
Yeah, I know that we don't really want a piecemeal that a zoning code changes, but this is, I didn't realize that we weren't allowing that, and that's just silly to me. Can we, you know, like I said, I know we don't really want a piecemeal, but I would like to see this happen, so that once people start getting their gardens going and they start producing stuff later this year, that they're able to sell them off. Is that something you can bring back to some, whether or not that's a possibility? Like I said, I know we don't want a piecemeal, but...
Sure. I think that there's a couple of different points to your question that probably should be considered by the council, is that I think there's a figure, that this is really kind of the tip of the iceberg in terms of, what I would couch as the relevant topic, and Becky helping out here, as urban agriculture, where I think there's a menu of things to consider. And the question is, is that do we, do we want to look at one aspect of that? A good example is chicken and bees, cottage industry issue. Are there, what other opportunities do we have to take a more comprehensive look? Takes a little bit more time, but at the same time, we give a better, we give a better menu of options, and also from a policy perspective, you guys have, we don't keep coming back to, hey, by the way, I have another great idea. We want to show you this other thing that we thought was really unique and exciting, and the next thing you know, you guys are just going, when are they going to stop talking about this and just tell us what they're doing? So we could definitely look at that. I just want to point out that that would be my, my thought process, is is there a better way to broach the whole issue?
Another advantage to holding off and doing it with the development regulations is that these types of topics create a lot of interest from the community, and so then we can also get their feedback from other aspects of those development regulations rewrite that they might not be as interested in or be paying attention to, and then they can also provide feedback as far as other things that are allowed on their properties, so...
I have a question for Wendy. So I know this is all about trying to get, you know, make sure that our community has access to healthy food, and one of the ordinances that we're looking at coming up later this month is the chickens and bees, allowing backyard chickens and bees. If that ordinance is somehow moved forward with the council in some fashion or another, is that, would that be a checkmark for the HEAL organization or the Live Well organization to advance us?
To advance? That's a great question. Why, I think it probably would, but I have to check with our campaign director, for sure. There's, the way the campaign is structured as well, is it's structured to sort of incentivize advancement in the three categories, so work site wellness, healthy food access, and active living. So what I'd have to check on is sort of what else, you know, is Northland already doing, so to make sense. So can you advance with just sort of one resolution focused on food only? Or does it sort of need to be the whole package to go along with the campaign? That's something to check on. But, I mean, that's what, that's what it's developed to do, is once you adopt an actual policy, then absolutely.
And when that actually comes forward for study session, the HEAL committee did study that issue and has, what they're going to try to do with other policies is provide a recommendation with their reasoning and ways that they think it could be made better for the community, just for your consideration, really. So that will be included with the packet when we discuss that.
And I should point out, too, there are several, this is pretty obvious the way it's like, there are also several sort of work site wellness-focused recommendations coming out, even just the food access assessment, which are absolutely sort of counted towards that, to the bucket category. There are several, yeah.
I think one of the little words that I read was Liquid was implementing putting healthy snacks in their vending machines, and that was one list, or ice step.
So yeah, Liquid's very good. And actually, what we've included in the recommendations here are, I think, more comprehensive, and actually stronger, because the recommendation is focused on how do you sort of set a whole agenda around healthy policies in general, definitely like meetings to vending contracts, which is like, they're doing the Fit Pick, to actually procurement, if you spend money on anything, so there's sort of a more comprehensive suite of recommendations, which...
Yeah.
...convey stronger message to the community.
The HEAL committee did identify that in the work plan as something that we can work with our smart living group on. We've separated our HEAL committee to focus on the external community, the healthy eating, active living as it occurs in the built environment outside of City Hall, and then we have our smart living committee that focuses on internal employee wellness and sort of what's happening inside the building. And we, we do think that there's a really great opportunity for those two communities to work together on a healthy food procurement policy, so...
Like, if we have members of the community that want to maybe get involved more in this, I know that you said that you have a resident committee. Are you kind of the contact person for the residents to contact and confess along here?
Yes, yes, and we had a very active seven-member committee. We've had a couple of members that have conflicts now when our regular meetings are, so I do want to reach out to them and see, do they still want to be involved in the committee, or should we post that we have a vacancy to fill with respect to that? So we are figuring that out, and I would be interested to know if there are other members that want to participate.
Okay, so I guess I would just ask to affirm that we have consensus to have a further discussion about council attending, or is it called a liaison, or is it actually a committee member, if you want them to be?
I think that's...
That's for further discussion.
I think it's, I think it's really what we're, either option. I think what we wanted to do was to make sure that council had an opportunity to plug into this, so that they understood what was going on, and you have a person on the ground that can give real-time updates in addition to that.
Okay.
So that could be either with the liaison or as a committee member, I think it's kind of, I think we would want them to actively participate.
Is there any opposition to that? Thank you so much. This is a great program. I see it being ongoing almost forever, because it seems like there's always things to do. So you guys have done a lot of work, and it really shows, so thank you all very much. Moving along, impounding of feral cats is the next agenda item. I don't know who's leading this discussion.
Jim and Michelle.
Jim and Michelle. Okay.
Mayor Protem, council, good evening. Chief Jim May, along with my animal control officer, Michelle Sustick, and I guess it was brought to our attention, you guys want some information on feral cats. And if you guys have any questions up front that you would like us to cover, we can, and then I will definitely give you opinion on where I stand on some of that, so...
Can I just start, because I'm one that asked for it to be brought on, and I want to give my background as to why I asked for it to be put on. In the last three years, last year in particular, this has become quite the topic for Kyle and I and Joyce. We've received many, many, many requests about this, some from the same individual. But one of the issues that I've had in my responses has just been in being able to say, council has in fact discussed this, and this is where we're at with it. And we haven't been able to completely say that yet, and so more so, I mean, we've provided feedback back to the residents and as to how we can address it, but it's come up again. And I just want council to understand the issue, say what we want to do with it, and then kind of leave it at that. And Kyle, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think that, and I'm sure the chief was going to address it, you know, the resident that is, you know, has been contacting quite a bit, you know, has an idea of what he wants done for this problem, you know, he's a pretty strong advocate for the spaying and neutering of these cats when they're caught, and so maybe if you weren't going to address that, if you could just address that as well, chief.
Okay, well, I'll turn it over to Michelle in a bit. I'm just going to give you some background on when it comes to impounding the feral cats and how that, you know, how we do it. At one time, we'd have about four cages that we would, you know, give the residents so they can catch those feral cats, and then we'd go pick them up when they gave us a call. However, it took up so much time, we had, we reduced it to three, and then we had to reduce it again to two, because it was taking up a lot of time with their duties of their animal control duties, plus they do all the vehicle code enforcement on the streets. So, you know, we're trying to, you know, get those cages out to those individuals, and really, it could be, I mean, if we had 10 cages out there, they would fill them. So, catching neighbors' cats, you know, we get a lot of, you know, we got a lot of that, and so when this came up, this gentleman, he sent several emails to me, too, and, you know, he wanted to, you know, he thought it was humane to get them in there and spade neuter them, clip their ears, and then re-release them in the neighborhood, you know, which was against our ordinance as well. So that's another consideration that I don't agree with, you know, lifting that ordinance, and then all of a sudden, you have family cats out there, and there's a lot of problems, you know, when feral cats and family cats mix. So, and that's where I'll turn it over to Michelle, because she's dealt with this a lot, and she's the expert, so, Michelle?
I think the biggest concern, aside from the fact of how much money it would cost either the city or whoever would be funding that, is the disease control, because a lot of the cats right now are carrying a lot of diseases that aren't being treated, like the feral cats that we pick up, we're seeing distemper, we're seeing feline leukemia, FIV, FIP. So those diseases are super highly contagious. There's also another one called Kalisi virus, and so if we start mixing in the feral population in with our pet population, you know, that greatly, greatly increases the risk of disease.
Michelle, how do you know if it's a feral cat or if it's a, somebody owns the cat? I guess that's something I've wondered.
Try to pick up a feral cat.
Okay, okay, so it's a tip...
Start there.
Yeah, it's a, so, yeah, you can, you know, feral cats, I mean, they're shy, but you can tell they've been, you know...
Handled.
Handled.
You know, that's a really good question, because a lot of times, when you pick them up initially, when they get caught in a trap, the cats, they really freak out, you know, they're bouncing around all over the trap, and they're crying, and I mean, they're literally trying to eat their way out of a trap. I've seen feral cats do it, and I've seen a domestic cat do it, you know, a pet do that. So the biggest way to determine whether or not it's feral is when we think it's feral, I mean, if this cat is just not calmed down by the time that we've got to the shelter, if we can't touch it, if we can't vaccinate it upon impound, a lot of times, we'll poke them with our pen or something, and it, you know, if they're feral, typically they'll bite that, or they'll attack it, or they'll try to run away from it, whereas pet cats will react differently to that stimulation. So we put them in a separate room at the shelter where they're kept on watch for anywhere from three to 10 days to see if their behavior changes. A lot of times, if it's somebody's own pet that is familiar with people, it'll calm down within hours to a day, and then all of a sudden, now you can pet it, now you can vaccinate it, whereas feral cats, you know, they'll, they'll stay at the back of the cage, they may not, they may not eat, they may not drink, and they just don't warm back up to people. So if it gets to the point where they are just not able, you're not able to handle them at all, you know, obviously, that's not an animal that can be adopted out. So at that point, it is determined feral. So, and the shelter does have its own program where if a farm, who you'll see the most come in are like farms and dairies, and they'll come in and request feral cats to be spayed, neutered, vaccinated, and then released on a farm or a dairy where they're having a huge mouse infestation that they can't keep up with, because it's almost impossible on dairies, you know, where grain is being provided for livestock. So they have a program where they are doing that as well from the shelter, so, you know, the majority of the animals that are being euthanized in a shelter right now are feral cats. But they are trying to reduce that number by also working with programs like that within the shelter as well.
And, and the thing that I want to stress, too, is because some people say, oh, my gosh, that number's so high and it's inhumane, but I can tell you, Michelle and Brian both, when they're out there dealing with feral cats, I mean, they're hit by cars, you know, they die of those diseases, you know, so that stuff, too.
Coyotes.
Coyotes. So, yeah, we catch them if we can't, you know, place them, you know, they are put down, but they are put down immediately.
You mentioned something about clipping the ears, so is that a sign that you have a feral cat if they have big ears?
It is. So obviously, nobody can go around and pick up cats, lift their tail, and see if they've been fixed, you know, because feral cats are not going to allow that. So to just by, to be able to tell.
Ears by house.
Yeah, exactly. And even, you know, cats and dogs these days that come home, the females are getting spayed, they're tattooing them now, so you can see pretty evidently whether or not they've been fixed, but still, with the wild feral cats, you're not going to be able to tell that. So with males and females, they're clipping the ear, and it's just the tip of the ear, it doesn't cause harm, and they just clip it. So if you ever see a cat with an ear, the tip of an ear missing, it's an indication that they have been spayed and neutered.
So Jim, I have a question, because it seems like the suggestion from the person doing the emailing is saying he wants to alleviate animal control from doing what they're doing now and make it easier on them by changing the ordinance. So you're laughing, because, please correct me, because this is just how I'm reading it. So it sounds like he wants to change the ordinance so that you're not going out after them, and that people themselves will be responsible for coming to animal control, getting a cage, doing it all themselves, taking it to a spay-neuter clinic, and then releasing it back. And so he's acting like it's taking that all off of you by changing the ordinance. That's how I'm reading it.
Again, it goes back, you know, our concern, too, is, you know, when you have people letting their, and they can't keep them at large, but then removing that ordinance, it still allows them to, you know, kick their cats out the door, and they will mix. I mean, they will, so, you know, the potential of picking up some of those diseases and spreading it to, you know, the domestic group is very high. I, I get what he's, where he or she's coming from when it comes to that, because in some cities, you know, they, they, you know, do that, where, you know, his hypothesis on it is that, you know, those feral cats, you know, will control their territory and chase everything else out, but they can't breed, so it should reduce, you know, the population of feral cats. I just don't want to gamble, because there's other consequences, too. We're going to have a bunch of feral cats, and cats already, you know, do damage, especially those wild cats, to, you know, bird populations and everything else, you know, so there's, you know, consequences to that, too. So I just would suggest caution, you know, when it comes to this, and it, and to me, if you guys got more than one individual that's talking about it, maybe this will spur some more debate, but I personally would say, yeah, let's, let's, let's not go down that road. That's my recommendation, Michelle. I think you should probably agree with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the act itself, if, if, you know, the citizens were out there trapping them and taking them somewhere and physically doing all the work, but as Jim stated, if we allowed the feral population to roam free in the city, then we would have to allow pet cats to be allowed to roam in the city. So if we take, you know, right now, we don't have a high number of cats roaming the city. I mean, if you drive through the city, you're not going to see a whole lot, but that could increase. I would like to think that our ordinance is actually keeping the cats inside. There are still residents who still allow their cats to roam free regardless of the ordinance, but I think if everybody was just allowed a free-for-all, it's really going to increase our workload as far as complaints, because some of our biggest complaints when cats are out causing a nuisance is that they're defecating in gardens, you know, and not just flower gardens, they're defecating in vegetable gardens, and, you know, they're tearing things up, and we have had the complaint that there are people that want to feed the birds, but then the cats show up and kill all the birds. So we had a resident that was very, very upset about that. So she was trying to trap cats off of her property to save the birds, and the same for the squirrels. We had a guy who was upset that the cats were killing all the squirrels, and the, and the rabbits, and, you know, the circle goes on. Right.
Who else want to chime in?
The cost to the city would be significant if we take them out to the shelter and then they're there for 10 days being observed. That's 10 days of costs that were occurring for each cat, plus the cost of the vaccinations, you know, the clipping the ears, which I think is horrible anyways, I just think that's brutal, and, you know, the cost for the spay and neuter, all of those costs are really going to add up to the city, too. These are the ones we're going to have to put the bill for that. So I think that, for me, is a, is a, is a big concern on this, too.
And, and that price increase, we're paying 160-some dollars a animal, you know, for a shelter, so... And there's nobody coming to, you know, pay part of that cost because they're feral, so that's our cost.
But I, I guess I read his emails as saying... But I, I guess I read his emails as saying that the city already is doing that, that's what they do with feral cats right now. So, now we have the cost, but he wants to alleviate it so that just individual people are doing it, and you're not involved in it.
Yeah, I think, personally, I, you know, I think that's great that, that, you know, if they want to catch those feral cats, but then you have them catching family cats, and you're going down and taking them, spaying and neutering them, and then all of a sudden, you know, you get Daisy back, and she has a clipped ear and tattoos on her belly, you know, where was she? You know, that's kind of like, what port did she come out of? You know?
And cats are very temperamental, so, you know, although professionals can try to determine whether or not the cat's feral or a pet within a few days, the average person may not. So, and I don't know what kind of kenneling that they would have the cats in before they could determine that, you know.
I think it's just interesting, because he did cite that Denver and Boulder, uh, Boulder, Broomfield, maybe, or Westy, I don't know, he cited a few cities that are already doing that trap-neuter-return program, and I, you know, those are big cities, so then you just wonder why we can't adopt some of the same.
Well, I'd say, let's.
I'm playing devil's advocate, okay?
That's fine. You know, let's let them play that out and see what happens.
Okay.
You know, and then a couple of years down the road, we can, you know, maybe reevaluate. But right now, it's like, to me, there's a, ooh, there's a lot of unknown consequences, so, let them, you know, deal with some of those consequences and see how, how they solve those problems and see if it actually worked, and, and then we can do some more research. I mean, Michelle, like I said, she, all those diseases, I was like, oh, my gosh, you know, so, I mean, she, you know, they're, they're very competent, our animal control people, so, I take their recommendations, and, 'cause they're like, no, don't. So, I was like, okay, I got your back on this one.
Any other comments? No?
So, I think the heart is definitely in the right place. There's no doubt about that, you know, absolutely. I just think that there, there are other things that we, that need to be considered before we just jump into something like that. Like I said, the disease control's gonna be the biggest one, you know, and, dog diseases do not transfer over to cat, you know, cats can't get what dogs can get, and vice versa, but the disease is out there. I mean, just in the last couple of weeks, um, Brian and I have both picked up and had to euthanize, um, I believe, three coyotes right now that were, uh, positive for distemper. And then I talked to some surrounding cities, and they also had a huge influx in the same disease, so, it's out there, it's prevalent, and obviously, we can't treat it in wild animals.
Can, can I just ask that maybe we monitor what, you know, like Carol said, Denver and Boulder are doing, and then, I don't know, maybe even reach out to them and, and kind of see what their program is, and at least keep that, you know, educate ourselves, you know, on at least what our, what some fellow communities are doing, I think it's not gonna hurt anything. Is that?
Again, no, that's totally agreeable. We come back and, um, I like to check the cost and everything else, and what they're seeing, and what other problems, what other complaints they're getting from other residents, you know, them killing their birds by bird feeders, so, um, yeah, we'll keep an eye out there, and, you know, talk to them.
Marcy, you feel okay?
Yeah, no, I feel okay. I, like I said, I just felt like it's really been three years of this conversation, and I felt like we just needed to make sure everyone in council is aware of it and what their requests has been.
Do you find out if you have a bar person, they, they not take care of the feral cats?
I think Weld County, per capita, has more dairies in it than any other county in the state, so, there are areas where they can get transferred somewhat locally, you know, so if we don't change the ordinance within our own city, maybe there's, you know, um, the ability to trap and relocate them instead of just putting them back in our own city, so, that's an option as well.
I just, it's spay.
Okay. Feral cats must arrest for now, and we will move on to Grand Street Improvements update with Kent.
Mayor Pro Tem Council, Kent Kisselman, Public Works, thank you for having me this evening. This is an update on the Neura project for the Grand Street improvements. Obviously, you've seen the signal out there where Perfect Patch asphalt was selected from the qualified bidders a couple of weeks ago. We are, uh, meeting with them, well, we've met with them, they're ready to begin construction on the fourteenth of March, and during that construction time, um, they're going to begin in the median area to do that work first, and then they will be heading to the outside to do the concrete work, and then moving into the, to the middle areas to do the milling and the overlaying of the project. Um, throughout the duration of the project, um, one lane will be, um, open in both directions, always keeping at, at minimum one lane open, and a turn lane, uh, you know, for the westbound traffic on one hundred and twenty. Again, there may be those hours or in-between times where they're doing something that is, um, caused, where we have to do flagging or something for a couple hours, and it's one-way traffic and stop-and-go, but, you know, we will try to limit that as much as possible. Um, we are meeting with SCL hospital folks tomorrow, um, to coordinate that schedule. This project is, the Grand Street project is scheduled to be completed on July first, so we want to ensure that they still have a gas line to be put into, um, Grand Street as well as, uh, the water line tie-in. Their grant, the gas line, they're going to start on the fourteenth as well, and that should be completed by the twenty-first, so that should be, um, a non-issue, but we want to make sure that we coordinate with the hospital on their, uh, water line tie-in connection and make sure that they're gonna be out of the way as, as, uh, the Perfect Patch folks are coming through. Uh, we also have a meeting, uh, scheduled with, um, the Webster Lake folks, and that is scheduled for March thirtieth. Debbie and I have, uh, spoken, and, and, uh, we, we think it's probably necessary to contact those folks and see if we can get an earlier meeting set up, just because, again, construction's supposed to start here in a couple of weeks, and we'd sure prefer to get out ahead of them, and instead of they just show up and, "You guys have been doing work for two weeks, what are you doing?" So, we're gonna try to get ahead of those folks and get that meeting set up as soon as possible, so I, uh, I don't at this time have that date. Again, we're gonna work on that tomorrow. That is kind of the update that I have, I will, you know, gladly answer any questions that you have with respect to the project. Again, the duration of the project is going to be from March fourteenth until approximately July first, so, um, again, we know, we understand that we have a carnival, um, coming up, um, you know, the hospital's under construction, we have the promenade that we would like to protect our interests there, um, you know, obviously, all of us travel this way as well. CDOT's going to be also starting, um, you know, project on I-25 and getting up in our, in our area as well, so it, it's, it's a very busy time. This is, you know, every year, it, it doesn't matter, it's construction season, and it begins in two weeks for us, so, that's, that's kind of what it is, we, we put up with it, but it's for the benefit, uh, you know, short, short-term for a long-term fix.
Any questions for Kent?
Uh, so, when it was originally brought forward to us last May, um, it ended at the, the entrance right there by Jim and Nick's, the, the, the project, and from Grant to that entrance is what it looks like here, attachment one. And then it ended up going all the way to the, currently, it's going to the entrance to the rec center. What, I guess, what, I'm curious, what changed from, from May to now to change that scope?
That was based on the FHU plan, and you don't have the other, the southern piece picture that goes with it.
So, so, so nothing changed, it was originally gonna go to, to the rec, to the rec center entrance, and then.
Rec center, yeah, the, the goal is to take it through the S-curve and to eliminate that sidewalk that's right in the middle of the S-curve.
Okay, perfect. That's what I was curious about, that's all I had. And then, also, I, I know that we had talked about, uh, it's been a long time, but we had talked about a sign, um, going over Grant. Has there been any more discussion about that?
Yeah, Brooke can talk about this a little bit, but in the Civic Center campus match plan, I believe, the Promenade Plaza was, uh, uh, put on sleep mode here for a little while till that could get started up again, and when that project gets resurrected or gets ramped back up again, I, I believe those discussions will be picked back up.
We're addressing the streetscape through the, this is the campus plan, the whole building, is what he said.
This project does include, you know, sending power to the main median, so there could be something for a monument site or anything that needs to be powered in the future, and it, as well as irrigation, so we'll have that option.
Thank you.
Questions? Any questions?
Well, I'm not, I have a question. Um, when is SCL Health's opening? Is it not the fall?
The fall, okay, so, everything's good there.
Um, are you going to allow any U-turns anywhere?
No.
None at all, okay.
Well, I mean.
I mean, people do.
It's signed now, and they still do it, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's.
Right.
Once, once construction starts, I mean, it's gonna be virtually impossible, and then once the project is completed, it is impossible, so.
Okay.
Um, you know, from here on out, I think it's gonna be fairly limited, and we won't see the, the, the midday crossers trying to scramble across the work zone, and that's not gonna happen either, 'cause it's obviously gonna be a work zone, and that's gonna be big, uh, big trouble for them, so, um, I, I think we're, our, our days of hopscotching across the street to get to the taco time or whatever our thing is there, and, and doing U-turns around there is, is over.
So, I know, go ahead.
Well, just, I think Brooke wants to follow up.
Yeah, real quick on that, uh, I just wanted to mention to the council that part of the SCL approval process is that we actually have a dedicated driveline on their property to the Metro North to address that concern, so that was one of the things that we worked on when we went through their entitlements, was that the left turn movement that we're creating to move into their property will also provide access to Metro North. And we were just contacted by them, I believe, last week, and they want to ramp up now and build their parking lot expansion, um, so that it gets done around the same time as the project.
Okay, that was my question, actually. And then, is there other entrances going to be closed off, then? There are entrances now that you take to get into the.
No, that'll just be a right-in, right-in, right-out.
Right-in, okay, okay, okay. That's it for me, anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along, Steve Grace with the 2016 residential street sweeping program.
Hello, Steve is coming up, I just, I don't know if everybody saw the post of the light over here, it's gonna be turned on tomorrow. So, um, and then, this bit says, "The new traffic section along Grand Drive between the hospital end of construction, the Webster Lake promenade will be activated later today, which is March third, but will flash yellow until Tuesday, March eighth." So.
Has that been decided, Kent, or?
I'm standing up back here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we, we, we went ahead and with, you know, with the window and the construction and stuff, it was going to be, you know, we've been, um, trying to get this light activated for months and fighting with Preston, who was here earlier to.
That's why.
So, um, you know, the anticipation was to get that light up and running and functioning up, and now with, you know, the construction beginning of, you know, it, it doesn't make sense to just run that thing for a week or two and then shut it back down again. So, we're gonna leave it in flash, uh, we're working out the, uh, the closing out of that project and, and making sure that everything does, in fact, work properly, but, um, you know, with the construction and stuff, it's, it's not going to function properly, so we'll just leave that in flash until, uh, the project is to a, a point of completion, then we can go ahead and activate that.
Okay, did we get that information correct, then? I mean, I don't think, we should be putting out information that's not accurate.
Yeah, we just talked, we just talked.
Really follows me that we're putting out inaccurate information. Thank you for the update. Thank you.
All right, Steve.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Um, I'm Steve Grace, I'm Public Works Operations Manager, and I want to talk to you tonight about our residential street sweeping program. First of all, why we perform this service, um, the program that we designed and tested back in October, um, along with some lessons learned, good and bad, from that, um, the first time we performed it this way, and then I, I wrap up with some recommendations on where I think we can make some improvements and continue this program in 2016. So, why we do street sweeping in the first place, um, some of it's just as obvious as you suspect, it's, um, for aesthetics, appearance, providing cleaner road network in, here in the city, um, safety, by going through and removing debris, sand, grit from the road, you're actually providing better driving surface for vehicles, bikes, pedestrians. Um, we also do it as a way of, um, helping keep the environment clean. There's a lot of contaminants that end up in our streets, and if we don't remove them somehow, um, they're gonna work their way into our, um, water systems, they'll end up in our stormwater system or any of the waterways. And, along with that, we, uh, we belong to the, uh, RAQC, Regional Air Quality Council, and as part of that membership, we're expected to maintain certain standards. If we put down a certain amount of chemical during the winter, salts and sand, we're expected to, um, pick up a certain amount of that and remove it, so, we want to comply. So, the program we developed last year, um, up till this point, we really only hit the main streets, um, on a, any kind of schedule. At least twice a year, we'd hit every main arterial in the city, and then the only other time we, um, went out to sweep would be following the snow event, where we tried to pick up as much as we could right after we put it down. Um, we would, as time permitted, around other tasks during the spring and summer and into the fall, send our sweepers out through the neighborhoods, but it was never a dedicated program. So, we decided last year to set one month aside, send both of our city sweepers through the neighborhoods in kind of a, um, well, it's a four-week-long program, we'd divide it into seven zones, they hit two zones each week and one zone on the final week. So, it was a, um, focused effort versus just sort of scheduling it as time permitted. And the reason we went with that is we thought it would have the least impact on our residents. Essentially, we had to work around our trash collection, um, cycle or schedule, because we can't sweep the days that the trash bins are out. So, using that as a starting point, we built, um, a plan that would let us hit the neighborhoods on the off-trash and recycling days, and my team would be out in any one of those seven zones for two days. The first day, they'd hit the odd side of the road, the second day, they'd hit the even side of the road, and that was the only impact, so any resident would only have to move vehicle one day out of the month, and that, we figured that would be the, the lowest impact and the best results. So, how we rolled this program out to the public, and I think we did a pretty good job in making notifications, were to use a, a couple of different means. We used our website, we put articles in the connection in September, and then again in October, um, and one of the most effective things we used was, we used our communication offices contractor, Yankee Peddler, to actually go out and door-to-door post a, um, flyer that looked like this, that, um, one week before the sweeping was gonna be in their neighborhood, they got this notice, and then again, the day before the sweepers were gonna show up, they got a second notice. We think it was pretty effective, we can, we can say at least every single home was provided that notice two times. And then finally, the, on the night before sweeping, my crews put out signs at the main entrances to each of those neighborhoods, so, we put out a sign that said, "Street sweeping, no parking," and said either Monday, Tuesday, had a little slider that we could adjust, odd or even side of the road, so coming into the neighborhood, there was a visible marker the day before and the day during the sweeping. So, that was our, um, program, that's what we tested, and I guess I'll give you what I consider the successes and the, um, the challenges, the areas for improvement. The successes were, um, we actually did what we set out to do, we made a significant improvement in the quality of the street surfaces, um, every day, when the sweepers came back the end of the day, they dumped several tons worth of debris, that we were able to take off the streets and put into the landfill, so, it worked as, um, as planned, as far as the actual collection, sweeping. We got a lot of calls from residents saying this is the first time that they saw the sweepers come through, um, they appreciated the notice, they appreciated the fact that we were doing it. Those two sweepers were actually a, a pretty significant capital investment for us, um, and they're pretty impressive when they're at work, they're big, giant vacuums with the sweeping attachments, and people, they're very noticeable when they're out there, so I think it's a good thing for us, the department, to get them out into the neighborhoods just versus running up and down the main arterials. And I think we demonstrated that we can use that flyer delivery service, um, pretty effectively. We, a couple of teams were put together, and they, they knocked everything out in a timely manner, so I think that's a, I would consider a good way of, um, getting the word out for this type of, um, operation, and I would suggest we continue doing that in the future. So, by far, the, um, what I call an area for improvement is trying to figure out a method to, um, increase compliance with our no parking. So, again, what, what we asked for, in the flyers and in the signs that we posted, was on Tuesday of that week, if your neighborhood is gonna be swept, keep the odd side of the road open, and then on Wednesday, keep the even side of the road open. So, we never actually shut down the road altogether, it was always open to traffic, just no parking one side or the other. But over the course of, um, the month of October, our sweepers counted close to fifteen-hundred parking violations, and it, it really degrades the effectiveness of this program, 'cause if you have one or two cars along the, a straightaway in a neighborhood, you can't just make that nice pass down the gutter and clean effectively, you have to swerve in and out, um, some of those areas are never gonna get cleaned then, and it takes longer to do what we should be. we should be able to do pretty quickly. We didn't have enough signage, in my opinion. We had the signs at the main entrances to the neighborhoods, but there wasn't a visible signal all along each street that said, "No parking this side." And as a result, that may have been one of the contributors, that people just went ahead and parked even though we tried to provide that notice. And a lot of the calls we took at Public Works were not necessarily complaints, but they were questions about the program. Are you going to come back again? Why did you choose this time to do it, not a little bit later in the year? There was some concern about picking up leaves. And we informed them that this wasn't a leaf removal, it was a street cleaning. And if we waited until November, once all the leaves are typically down, you run the danger of being in snow season, that makes things complicated. So, I think we can use these same flyers and same sort of marketing and increase the amount of information that's on it, so a lot of these common questions can be answered upfront. So, those are some suggestions to improve, or those are some areas we found that we could improve. And when I talk about recommendations, I'll suggest what I think might do that trick. As far as budget implications, the cost of the complete flyer distribution two times was a little bit less than $2,000. So, I'd suggest if we do two rounds of sweeping this year, that we use that same service for about $4,000 out of my stormwater fund. And the only other cost is going to be the $3,000, and I'll explain what that goes toward as far as signage. So, my recommendation, if we want to continue this program in 2016, and I do recommend that we continue the program, I think it's effective, is to, one, to increase the content of the information on that flyer that we hand out to answer some of those frequently asked questions, if you will. And then, number two, I want to flood the neighborhoods with signage. I want to leave no question that this side of the road is off limits of parking the day before and the day during sweeping. So, any, from any vantage point, anywhere in one of those neighborhoods, there should be some visible sign on that road that says, "No parking this side." And my recommendation is, rather than spend a lot of money on signs and give us some flexibility, we use a very basic sign like this. If we order 500 of these units, we'll get a price of under $4 each. So, for a little bit less than $2,000, my crews would, even the biggest neighborhoods that we mark off, be able to put one of these, several of these per block on that side of the road. So, my crews would go out the day before, set these up, and then the night after that sweeping was finished or the afternoon, they'd switch them over to the other side of the road facing the opposite direction. So, we'd have a clear no parking zone established within that neighborhood. And then, my final recommendation, coordinating with the police department, was to discuss enforcing a no parking fine. So, the lowest citation level, we have a $25 ticket for parking in what will be established as a city no parking zone during the day of that sweeping or during those two days. We don't recommend any type of towing at all, apart from a car with expired tags or no tags, no registration, but that's no change to the current policy. If there's a car parked on a public road that is without tags, it's fair game for towing. But I think that by making the no parking a lot more visible and using the same type of communications we used last year, and then enforcing the no parking with the actual citations, I think it'll send a message that this is a serious program or this is something we're serious about providing the service to the residents, and I think it will increase compliance significantly and it'll help get the job done better and more effectively. So, can I answer any questions or provide you any additional information?
The only question I have is around the police. Do we really have someone who can get tickets out that day?
What scares me is the $1,500 violation.
I have several.
How much is a $25 fine?
Well, and do we even have a city ordinance that allows for this to happen? So, I mean, if you order a citation, we all come in here and judge, the judge will throw it out because we don't even have an ordinance for it. And we can't just, correct me if I'm wrong, we can't just tow a car because they have expired plates, there's a process that has to go through, they can get ticketed first and there's a whole thing and you don't just go out and tow people's cars right away.
Well, if it's posted, we could tow them, talk to Cory, you know, the thing is, once we tow them, we own them.
Exactly.
So, if there's any damage or anything else that was concerned, I think the personnel, I mean, do we have to just assign a cop, fill those names and follow the, and that's something we talked with Steve on and we'll work it out. I think it's for $25 a car, I mean, that's like, if we're giving them nothing else and everything else, I think maybe we should evaluate a step or two since it is taking time away. That's another officer that I'm already short of working outside of.
What if we try this year, like, more signs and see if the signs, because they're only in small spots, and then see if it decreases the violation before we plan for an officer? Because I feel like you'd have to flag that on the flyer and say that it's going to be a $25 violation and as you're saying, it's not in the ordinance. I love the program and I'm.
Sure.
Thrilled that it's going to continue. So, just that one piece.
And then I have, so, for your signs, are we going to, are you going to have to get homeowner approval to go put those in people's yards or?
They'll be in the right of way.
Three?
Well, they'll be on the side, right by the sidewalk, this way to put them.
In people's yards, though?
It will be in the city right of way, not in people's yards.
So, that doesn't make sense then because how are you going to do the no parking signs going down the street with those without putting those in people's yards?
Because the city right of way extends to a little bit further, same to where the water meters are located, that's city property. City right of way width goes into people's properties.
And that should be made very clear on any flyers or anything where those are distributed so, because I can see the staff going, putting those up every four or five houses, however many it is, and residents coming out there saying, "What the heck?" And getting them right back out and then throwing them in the street or calling us or calling the staff saying, "What's going on? Call the police, someone's putting signs in my yard." I go, "Lester." I don't, you know.
We didn't, the only signs we used were at the main intersection coming into the neighborhood. There was only about a dozen per zone and.
I could see those being more of a problem.
I, that's what I'm saying, just because.
I'm going to try the metal signs, the metal signs that you, that we see the contractors use when they go to pay, you know, repay this side of the road. How much, how much is a single one of those, like a no parking sign with a little circular bottom metal?
Yeah, I know, it's $50 ballpark.
So, I think your flyers need to look more intimidating. Because that flyer that you just showed didn't look very intimidating to me.
Yes, informational, you're right.
Honestly, I think to get people's attention, I mean, instead of just seeing something and they just chuck it, I mean, if you really show that you mean business, I mean, "We're going to street sweep and could you please just not park there." So, I, like, I could see it being read or just something that's more attention-grabbing that people may actually read instead of just tossing away, just a suggestion. Is that that, you're, why are you laughing at that?
No, no, uh, Ken here has a better idea.
I'm calling you out on that. What's the better, oh.
Is to give them a feral cat.
Lord.
Sorry, I.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
Chief, and this is just a suggestion that I came, that I'm thinking of in regards to putting a police officer out there. Would that be, would there be any interest in maybe an off-duty type thing? And it could be an off-duty overtime or contract or anything like that, you know?
You know, I, some of the tickets, I mean, I'm just trying to brainstorm, I mean, I have a couple, you know, my animal control, maybe it's on a day when they're not, you know, organic and pay them, there's a lot of things. We'll work with Steve and come up with a solution. I just heard the $1,500 violations and I'm like, whoa. So, I think with the better signage and, you know, because it is a problem. Those guys are out there cleaning the streets of that community, they need to adhere to, you know, those, personally, I, you know, I think one of those things that'll get their attention is the $250 pieces, you know, here. But that's just beyond the hammer. I have my toolbox.
That's almost, we're talking $37,500 in fines right there, $25 fines, what you guys were fined last year roughly.
Yeah.
Right.
Maybe to help, provide some context with that number, with almost $1,500, it wasn't a steady violation trend throughout the entire day. Typically, most of the offenses would be in the morning, and we said, "We're going to start at 7:00, 7:30 and work till 3:00." By 9 o'clock, it'd just be residents that said, "Oh, yeah, I'm parked out there. When I go, I'll be gone for the day," and then they could sweep. And it tailed off. And then, the other interesting trend was, as I mentioned, we did one side of the street one day, one side of the street next day. I'd say the majority of the violations in each neighborhood were during the first day. And then, as residents, people saw the sweepers moving around, on the second day, they tended to comply a little bit better. So, I, if this was going to be an enforceable policy with a citation, I think most of that would happen early on during the month. I think word would get out pretty quickly and I think people would react. Yes, please.
How many signs did you say you wanted to get of the little $4 ones?
I said, 500. Some, the largest zones that we've set up are down in the southwest side of town and it's a fairly large area, some long streets, long blocks down there. Up in the northeast, it's a little bit more compact. So, I think I'd plan for the largest neighborhoods and then we'd have some spares. If some were vandalized, we could replace them. And also, just from a logistics standpoint, I could put 500 on a couple of trucks with my crew, and these are lightweight, I can get them out pretty easy. If we went to something a little bit sturdier, like you suggested, the small metal signs, ones that weigh 30, 40 pounds, that gets to be more of a logistic puzzle, how you actually get them deployed.
Listen, we talked about that early, Kyle. I'm afraid that small signs would disappear to the scrapyard if we put those metal signs out.
That's true. I just, I, I see some calls coming in about, about the signs going in the, in the yard because I was unaware that there's a right of way in my yard even as it used to be, so I just foresee that.
I'd like to have maybe an alternative plan, you know, besides just those signs. Because I think that is going to be a big deal. We go out there and plug something in somebody's.
I'm sure it's wired up in my house.
I have a solution. We use that style of sign and then we back it with a stake and then we stuck them in big cones and, you know.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's possible. Mostly cones, but.
Yeah, I can't, honestly, I'm looking at my neighborhood and that's going to be, that's going to be an issue.
But they just need to comply. I don't see why it should be such an issue. Okay, they're going to street sweep, that's what the sign says.
No, no, just a sign in their front yard, is what I'm saying.
I'm not, I, I agree they need to comply, but I, I just, I, my, our phones are going to get them lit up.
Absolutely. When people start getting the signs replaced.
A little mini stake, it's like aerating your yard for you, I'm good. And so, if they're missing a few $4 signs, who cares? That's kind of minimal in my book, but I like the more the merrier effect because obviously, it's not working the way it is with 1,400 violations, so.
But we, we didn't have any signs on the street last time or just in the entryway to the?
Just in the entrance ways to those neighborhoods.
So, no signs on the street at all?
No. And to some extent, we really can't place anything in the street itself because the gutter is really where the sweepers focused on. It does sweep down each side, so we couldn't go with the cones or something, they would impede its progress.
But you would be on the sidewalk.
Yeah, you put them on the sidewalk.
Which would, again, cause issues, everything causes issues with our residents.
Well, you're looking at it this way, everybody will get educated then, everybody has an easement on their front lawn.
That's going to be.
How far in advance are we placing?
We place them the afternoon prior. So, returning, residents coming home would see, and it would say, you know, 7 to 4, we could adjust the time so they don't worry that that night they're out of luck, but they have to move by the morning. And then, we move them after we swept that one side over to the other side at the end of the day, so.
And maybe they need to be placed a little bit longer for the residents' enjoyment in their yards? We could put them out like a week in advance so that they know? I mean, I don't know, that's just a suggestion, the longer that they.
Well, what, and one of the goals is to minimize the, the time that they're going to be restricted. So, honestly.
Oh, yes.
Any home is only going to have a parking restriction for seven hours one day.
Yeah.
And then, the signs are going to be moved and life continues.
Yep. I wasn't even thinking of how the sign reads, so yeah, that makes sense.
If you try to stick that sign in some of the cities right of way, with a chemical screwdriver, you're going to, the first hole, because that won't go through the rock and gravel that's there. And secondly, you're going to break that bar where you press that line, it's going to break very easily. 150 pounds, 200 pounds of weight on that little spot, well, it's going to come off. The other part, the other comment is that, what's wrong with asking, as you're putting this up, what's wrong with asking the resident if it's okay?
I have no problem with that.
Can I put this up here for seven hours? I mean, you're going to be there anyway.
Should a resident come out and say, "What are you doing?", then I'd certainly say, "This is what we're doing."
And the other part, another point is that it takes three to seven contacts for most people to get the message. So, you've only had, what, one contact, that's one or two, that's all. It's the first time we've done it like this, is the whole neighborhood. Through this year, we do it twice. By next year, oh yeah, I remember that. I mean, it takes, you have to educate, you know, your customer, you have to let them know, as much information as you can get out there in the utility bill and the flyer and the community connection and the website, eventually it spreads. Because, "Oh, they're going to get $25 tickets." Don't do it. Just don't do it.
I ask you a quick question. I know that you're, you're splitting it up and you want to do two annual sweepings. Now, are you doing half of the city in the spring, half of the fall, or are you going to do the whole?
No, we do the whole thing.
Twice a year?
Twice a year.
Okay. And is that going to be, is the spring going to be May then? Is that what I saw kind of on the May and then fall, the October roughly?
I think October worked pretty well, so I tried to stick to that same schedule and I think we could plan for maybe the, a little bit later in May, the last four weeks of May and so the first, and hope that nature cooperates. That would be, that would let us do a final thorough cleaning for everything that we used during the snow this, during this winter.
So, are we okay with Steve's recommendations except for maybe the $25 parking citation, which we're not sure about yet, to be discussed at a further date? To be determined?
No, there was number three at all.
Right, that's what I said, without that one. But one and two are okay so far by everybody?
The one thing I would check on, since we have stopped delivery of our more flyers via Yankee Pedler, we might need to check on that, see if there's an alternate solution.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. Are you good, Steve?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the input.
You guys really did a great job last year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for doing my street. Not giving me a ticket. Okay, event sponsorships. David, is that yours?
Yeah. Council members, I wasn't too familiar with either of these sponsorships. I asked Susan a little bit about Almost for Home, and as your memo says, the amount that was sponsored last year was $500 and I've never heard of the Precious Child one. So, suggestion was you had to bring it to council and get your direction on how you want to proceed or not with these.
I mean, they're both very wealthy organizations and we should support them.
I agree.
I totally agree with that. How did we, how did we word this though when we, when we brought this up last year? I thought it was city manager's discretion.
That's what I thought.
And so, yeah, I didn't, because I was surprised that he isn't, but I think it is. I think it is a city manager's discretion.
Yes, David, just being careful.
What?
I think it's David just being careful, just not being part of that at the time.
I think there was both, there's both city manager's discretion as well as city council sponsorship. It's, I think there were two different ones, two different levels.
Yeah, because like the advance I thought was city manager's discretion and then just purely supporting an organization.
I was uncertain of both of these, so I decided to bring it to council and get your direction.
Does anyone have an issue with either of these organizations? Because they do great things for our residents, so.
The thing that I would have concern about is just the levels because there isn't a $500 sponsorship for Almost Home. There's a basic which is 550, which I wouldn't mind bumping that up for their Precious Child tire. that up if we're going to do Precious Child higher. So, I would like to see them probably both in the same level. So, we have Almost From Us Rose sponsorship for 1,500. And then the other one, it looks like maybe the Act Two sponsor, $1,750 would be the closest. I don't, didn't see a $1,500 for Precious Child. Oh, that one does say $1,750.
That was $1,700, yeah.
Yeah, so I would just say bump that up on Almost From Us. So, that would be closer to be in comparable, comparable sponsorships.
So, if I have... Consent this on $1,500 on Almost From Us and $1,750 for Precious Child?
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business that anyone wants to discuss? I was going to, so April is, Nash is National Fair Housing Fund, and so I just wanted to see if there was any interest or any opposition to doing a proclamation. We still have some time, but I've got to throw it out there early rather than the day before, you know, another way to go and ask, "Can we proclaim this in our plan?" So, I've been just looking at some different proclamations and just want to throw it out and see if anybody would be okay with that.
Have an agreement? Sounds good.
Okay, I'll go ahead and give it to Joan and Dana. Thank you.
So, it could just be the timing of our award postcard and the fact that it said chicken and bees. But I have been inundated with calls asking for updates, and I'm just wondering if we could maybe take the chicken page that is on the website and put some update, like a timeline, like November 5th, we talked about it, and we're back on March 21st. And then we could easily tell residents that that page has got all the latest updates.
Do that, bro.
Update changes.
We can do it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? We're adjourned.